Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the West Orange Board of Education meeting and welcome to West Orange High School. Mr. Calavano?
So, I don't know if you noticed a change in the agenda. Usually we have, the board goes into confidential session prior to the public session. And this evening, we went into executive session for matters pertaining to personnel, legal, and miscellaneous confidential student matters. So, I always treated the meetings as two separate meetings, but from here on out, we're going to treat it as one meeting. So, we already did the roll call. We did the notice of meeting. We passed the resolution at 6:48 to go into the executive. And we will always come out no earlier than 8 o'clock. So, the meetings will still start at 8 o'clock, the public session. So, it's just going to flow through as one single meeting. Right, so the flag saluting and the notice of meeting will be already done prior to this 8 o'clock session.
Thank you, Mr. Calavano. Okay. May I have a motion, please, for the closed and public meeting minutes of September 18th?
I'll move that.
About seconds.
Thank you. Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Morticott?
Yes. Okay. Mr. Rutske, your report.
Thank you. So, before we move out, I'm just going to kind of go through my report. We're going to do the testing report, which includes the PARC scores and the science scores from last year. Then, we're going to go over the Evers HIB presentation, which is required. Then, I'm just going to show something that we're going to be posting around the schools since it'll be put up on the screen. And then, we'll come back and we'll talk about the district goals and a quick thing about New Jersey CUSAC and then get into HIB report. The science assessment, I'm going to discuss while we're doing the actual testing presentation because it kind of aligns with that. So, if I can ask the board members to just have a seat in the audience and we'll get started with the presentations.
I'm the district test coordinator. And we are going to take a look at the 2017 PARC scores for West Orange. And we'll have some comparisons with the state and with PARC and also with last year. This is similar to what we showed you last year. This is now the third administration that we had of PARC in the spring. And it's for ELA subject and mathematics in grades three through 11. And at the high school, you have Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, also at the middle school as well. And if any of you in the audience have children who took the PARC, you know that you received a parent report that was sent home in September, same as last year and the year before. And there's five different levels for students and their performance. And four and five level are students who are proficient. This is another way of looking at it. These are the actual numbers. So, Level 1, you see, goes from 650 to 699. So, the test is 650 and 850 is the highest level. You'll notice that in Level 4 and 5, it varies, the ending level and the beginning. Each subject and grade level varies slightly. You know, you could be 752 and another test is another number. So, it varies slightly. And if you look at your child's report, you can see those numbers. And with Language Arts, you see that reading and writing are broken out into two categories. So, when you look at your child's report, you'll see scores broken out for reading and writing as well. Now, we're going to move on to graduation requirements. This, these slides aren't different from last year. They're just giving you more information. These are also on the state's websites as well. And I know the high school has been giving over the last few years and this year as well, information to parents about the different graduation requirements because they do vary slightly for the different classes. So, you'll see for classes of 2018 and 19 for this year and next year, they're slightly different than going forward.
All right.
And these are the more specifics for each class and exactly the scores they have to get. So, for example, the classes of 2018 and 19, they can use SAT or ACT scores, not just the PARC scores to pass, but they have to get certain scores. And now, we have the class of 2020 and then the class of 2021. So, these are our current ninth graders. These students, they need to take all of the PARC tests that they're in courses for. And they need to get passing scores. So, they need to get those Level 4s and 5s. And here, we have a shot, a screenshot of our students that opted out over the last few years. So, we have score, sorry, numbers from 2016 PARC and then last year, 2017. So, we have gone down with students opting out, which we want. We want kids to take the test. And you see the totals at the bottom. And as you go up in level, the high school, there's more students who have opted out.
One of the pieces I'm going to talk about is the 11th grade. And this is my big concern I have with the new science assessment being moved to 11th grade. It used to be with all biology, students taking biology. Now, it's for every 11th grader. We have it, it used to be for 4th grade. It's been moved to 5th grade for this year. And 8th grade has been consistent. The problem I have with moving it to 11th grade is that we have all the AP exams. Students focus really in on AP. So, we already know that across the state and across the PARC states, that we have a concern in 11th grade with students taking the PARC. Now, we're going to add in a science assessment to 11th grade as well. And this is the biggest concern. So, when you look at the number of students and we say, this says opt-out, it could be students who are absent, kids are sick, whatever it might be. These aren't just opt-out. These are number of students that didn't take it. But you look at 11th grade and clearly, 125 students compared to the rest of the grades. And in 10th grade, you see that number higher than we'd like, obviously not as high as 11th grade. But that's a real concern and we've voiced that to those at the state. We'll see if that changes. I don't believe it will, but it's going to be another conflict with the 11th grade students that we have to work at. And I can tell you that the focus from us has always been the AP exams until PARC becomes an absolute requirement. We focus our scheduling around the AP exams so kids can do well on the AP, have the opportunity to do well, and then the PARC is second. Now, we have the science piece that we also have to contend with and we'll have to figure out what the schedule priorities are going to be from there. Ms. Diggman?
All right. So, now, we're going to take a look at how we did compared, West Orange did compare to the state and PARC. So, what you're looking at here, and we're going to see grades three all the way up to grade 11. So, on the left side is English Language Arts. On the right side is math. We're looking at grade three. Blue is West Orange. Red is the state. And green is PARC. So, when I say PARC, that's all the different states, I think there's only about 10 now, that are taking PARC, that are taking the tests. And you can see the 2015, 2016, 2017. And you, we want to go up, of course. And you see, this is a nice slide that we're higher both from the state and from PARC.
Yeah, the key here, we're going to go through these slides quickly, is trending upward from the left to the right. That's really the key from 15 to 17. Go ahead, Ms. Diggman. Let's just kind of go through them. Third grade?
Fourth grade. Again, English on the left. On the right is math. Fifth grade?
If you can stop for one minute. One of the things that you have to look at when you're looking at trends is when you see West Orange or any other district take a dip down, you have to look at the other two indicators as well. You look at state and you look at PARC to see if they took a dip. If you did, then you might want to assume that there might have been a change in the test, there might have been a change in the cut score, things of that nature. When you only see one of the three go down, then you might want to look at it a little differently. Please.
Okay. And these slides that we're looking at, these are different groups of children. So, it's the same test over three years, but different students. We're going to look at longitudinal, but I want you to see the difference. So, we're really just looking at the tests now, not so much the students. And here, we have 6th grade, 7th grade, 8th grade, 9th, 10th, and 11th grade English, and Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. And how did our district perform? So, what you're looking at now, again, if you receive PARC reports, parent PARC reports of your own child, you would have noticed a graph similar to this with your child's performance. So, again, remember, we have the five levels in PARC. So, your Level 1, blue is West Orange, red is the state, and green is PARC. The top is English for 3rd grade and the bottom is math 3rd grade. And remember, we want our bars to be high in Levels 4 and 5. You want low bars in Levels 1, 2, and 3 because those are your students who are not performing at a proficient level. So, you see that there is a nice trend upwards towards Levels 4 and 5. So, now, we're going to take a look at grade 4, grade 5. And again, ELAs at the top and math is on the bottom.
Go back one slide, please. If you look at mathematics Level 5, you see that you can barely see the bar graph. Again, that's something, if that was only West Orange and the others were higher, you should be concerned. But you can see across there that something happened with the 8th grade math test.
English 9, English 10, English 11, Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II.
Okay, I just want to make a point that there's been some comments made to me about the scores at the high school and so on and so forth. One of the things I've said since PARC has come out, and I've gone on record and said I'm not a fan of PARC. It's the state test, it is what it is, we have to do it, and so on. However, until something is mandatory, meaning that every child must take the test, they're not going to take it as serious as they have to. All right? So, when you're looking at scores, be careful that you're not judging, teaching, students, et cetera, on a couple of bar graphs or on a couple of scores. It's not fair to do that. When we look at a lot of data and a lot of data points, then we can determine, was this test something that we really can use for accuracy? So, be careful when you see that it's not trending the way we want it to. When something becomes a requirement, I think we'll see a difference there.
And now, we're going to take a look at how our schools did in 2017. And again, this presentation will be posted on our website.
It is posted. It's posted now.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's posted. It's posted. So, you can go look at that. And this way, you can look at the numbers and the graphs at your leisure. So, here, you can see in the blue, all of our elementary schools. And at the bottom, we have district and state. In the blue, we have ELAs, the first column, and then math for 3rd grade. The pink is 4th grade and the green is 5th grade. So, this is how our schools performed in 2017. This is grade 6 through 8. Blue is 6th grade, 7th is red, 8th is green. And here, you have the high school, English 9, 10, and 11. And then, at the bottom, you have Algebra I. And remember, at Liberty and Roosevelt, we have Algebra I students, so those are posted there. And Geometry and Algebra II. All right, so now, we're going to take a look at longitudinal.
One of the important pieces is when you look at longitudinal data. And this is really the only data that I really focus on because it's looking at students over time, looking when they took it in 3rd grade, 4th grade, 5th grade, and so on, moving forward. And you can compare the same students. When you're comparing last year's 3rd grade to this year's 3rd grade, they're completely different kids, so you have a different mix. This is the data that's very important that we use to really dig in and see how students are doing on a long-term basis.
On the left, you have English Language Arts. And on the right, you have math. We have West Orange, the state, and PARC. So, 2016, that's the blue. So, those are the blue scores in 2016. 2017 are the red scores. So, this is the same group of kids. So, when we look at the first two, we're looking at West Orange and ELA. These are our current 5th graders. So, in 3rd grade, they were in the blue there. And then, in 4th grade, they're in the red, the red bar. And they're trending up the way we want. And then, you have the math. Here, we have our current grade 6 students. And they've been here, they've taken three of the PARC tests. So, those are showing right now. And again, we were trending up and in most of these bars were above the state and PARC. And here's our current grade 7 students, current grade 8, and our current 9th graders and how they did in the PARC over the last three years. Now, we're going to take a look at how all the different subgroups performed. These are the different ethnic groups, total, special ed, economically disadvantaged. So, what you're looking at here, this is for English Language Arts, grade 3. And we're comparing West Orange with the state. I didn't compare PARC here because PARC is just much lower. So, it's a better comparison with just us and there would be too many bars. We have total, special ed is the next group, limited English, African-American, Asian, Hispanic, multiracial, white, and economically disadvantaged. So, again, wear blue and the, and the state is red. So, that's grade 3. This is grade 4 ELA, grade 5 ELA, 6 ELA, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11. And now, we're going to move on to math. So, we're going to start with 3rd grade. So, the same type of slide except the subject is math. Now, remember, everybody's in total. Everybody's in, in that subgroup. And then, it spreads out. And remember, as a student, they can be in more than one of these subgroups. So, we have 4th grade math, 5th grade, 6th, 7th, 8th, Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra And now, we're going to take a look at science.
Before we go into science, just a reminder that we moved into the next-generation science standards. And it was truly a learning curve as well with the, the testing piece of this. So, we need to understand that if we see a tiny little dip, that was expected. The state and the individuals in charge of it made districts aware that we would see a dip in the scores based on the new standards.
This is the 4th grade. And you can see wear blue, West Orange, and the state's red. And the first grouping is for 2014, 15, and then 2016 and 2017 are the last ones. And the numbers are up there for proficiency. And here, we have grade 8. This was NJASK for grade 8 over four years. And the biology test at the high school level. And again, over the four years. Here are some resources for you with understanding the PARC and the reports and so on. Also, the New Jersey Department of Ed has a lot of information for parents as well to go on to and get information about any types of state testing.
What we're going to do is, since everybody's seated, we're going to just move into our, we have two other quick presentations. Lauren, if we could go ahead and just pull up the Evers HIB. Ms. Diggman, can you just stick around for us, please? If there's any questions that maybe you or I need to address?
Thank you.
Okay, now, obviously, this is very hard for you to see, way in the back. Again, it is posted if you want to pull it up. But what we're looking at is the far-right column of each of those sections. The left side is the violence. The, to the right of that is vandalism, which is in the black lettering. Next to that is weapons, which is again in the red, which is in the middle. Then, we have the substance abuse. And the far-right is the HIB. Now, we have to report this out. And obviously, the goal is to continue to trend down with certain things. But I will say, and there's always been a conversation about substance abuse when the number gets to a certain place. And what's really important to remember are high schools and some middle schools, but high schools in particular, they're dealing with the issue of using drugs. And we have to be realistic in that terms, in those terms, excuse me. But what's important is the help we're providing the students and the families. It's very, very important. So, when we look at that number saying, oh, my goodness, 26, 27, 28 students, it's important that we realize that those students are getting the help that they need along with other students to make sure that they're not making bad decisions. So, let's start with the violence on the left-hand side first. We have it listed by Gregory, Hazel, Mount Pleasant, Kelly, Redwood, St. Cloud, and Washington, which are our elementary schools. Then, we move into Edison, Liberty, Roosevelt. And at the bottom is West Orange High School. And then, the total is, is at the very bottom. Last year, we had 47 cases. This year, we have 15. One from Roosevelt, 14 from the high school. When I say this year, I'm sorry, I meant the 16, 17 school year. Vandalism, same exact order. We had four cases, three from the high school and one from Redwood. Weapons, we had one at Liberty. Substance abuse, 26 cases at the high school. And HIB, we had a total of 38. At the last meeting, we talked about the 38 cases. And the breakdown, we had two at Gregory, four at Hazel, one at Kelly, one at Edison, 23 at Liberty, three at Roosevelt, and four at the high school. I just want to go through the numbers from last year, meaning the 15, 16 year, excuse me, two years ago, to the last year of 16, 17. Again, violence, 47 to 15 cases. Vandalism, 12 to four cases. Weapons, two to one. Substance abuse, 33 to 26. And lastly, HIB, 37 to 38. What does this data tell us? Until we have these numbers at zero across the board, we keep working at it. And we work with students, we work with families to help them when they make mistakes. Some of these things are issues that happen outside of school that are brought into school. And we try to help in any situation we can. But it's, it's important that you realize all of these areas are something that everybody who works in the district try to help students and try to help the families with. So, that's the vandalism, violence, HIB report. And then, the last thing I want to pull up is something that we are doing in the next couple of weeks. And I know that some of you have seen this around. We're going to be posting posters the size of 24 by 36 inches in the following locations of all schools. They will be in the entryways of all schools. They will be right outside the main office. They will be in all gyms, all cafeterias, and strategically placed where the principal thinks that there's a lot of traffic for individuals to see this. This isn't something that has to do with a political stance. In fact, it's the exact opposite. We, for years, have been working in schools about respect, respect for each other, respect for others, and so on. And this is just a reminder about if you can't be respectful, then we have a lot of work to do. And that's the most important thing we can do in schools. Let's be respectful to each other and let's kind of work through the problem. So, you'll be seeing these in the schools within the next couple of weeks. We're going to try to make sure they're translated into all the languages to make sure that when anybody walks in the building, they understand exactly why it's there and what it says. But with that, those are the three pieces we have for the, the presentation on the screen. So, I'd like to invite the board to come back up and we'll go ahead and move on with Ms. Morticott, do you have any questions?
Where do I start? Yes, I have quite a few. Okay. For the opt-out numbers, you said maybe students were, could have been opt-out or sick or, you know, whatever. You mentioned that the scheduling, you scheduled around AP exams. And so, going forward, you have to now schedule around the AP exams and science exam? Are parents aware of the scheduling conflict for testing? Or will you send a letter home?
No. A letter, a letter went home to all parents explaining that the test changed to, from 4th grade to 5th grade and from the biology class to all 11th graders. We don't have the specific information from the state yet as it is not done. What we do know is that it's going to be a computer-based test and it's in those five, excuse me, those three grade levels. Once we have that information, we will communicate that with all the parents and we'll start planning and doing what we need to do.
Okay. On slide number five, the high school graduation assessment requirements. Number three, Ms. Diggman, what is the percentage of students who, I guess, the, the education professionals aside, need a student portfolio to meet their graduation requirements? I think in years past, it was something like 10 or 13 percent. I don't know what it is now.
Well, it's going to vary based on the different classes and because of the PARC, if they're, if they're taking PARC or SAT or if they didn't take any of those. The high school would have the exact numbers of the, of the students who took the portfolio process.
Portfolio? You don't have an average over the last three years of PARC?
Off the top of my head, I do not. We, we have those numbers, yes.
Okay.
I don't have it off the top of my head. It is a number of students. And this is across the state. There's a large number that go through the portfolio process.
Okay. Earlier, Mr. Rutske and I had a conversation. And I know you mentioned that everyone knows that you're not in favor of PARC. And a lot of parents are not. But the whispered conversation in Trenton, because as a member of the Board of Directors for New Jersey School Boards and other committees for the Essex County School Board, I've also heard that PARC is not going away because they don't have anything lined up. So, hopefully, parents and, and students will make an effort to make sure more students take it. I noticed our opt-out numbers went from about 1,000 the first year that we had it and it's now down to 366. So, that's, that's an improvement. Mr. Rutske and I also talked about what's happening at the math level. When, when I looked at the scores, the one thing I noticed that was common in a lot of these scores were that the math significantly dropped. Mr. Rutske, you said that you were going to have a discussion, I guess, with the math supervisor about that and let us know tonight or?
No, we, we had a meeting last week in discussion about our math program. And one of the important parts that we have to examine is when is algebra being taught? When is it starting in elementary? How often is it being taught, et cetera? So, we need to look at our scope and sequence. We need to look at when it's being We need to look at when it's being taught, how it's being taught, how it's meeting the standards, et cetera, et cetera. Algebra doesn't begin in eighth grade. It's down in the elementary schools. But I want to be careful when we say that the math scores dropped a lot. You know, that a couple of percentage points is not a lot. We have to look at our middle school and high school and determine, but again, it does not start in middle school and high school. So we've got to dig deeper and figure out what's happening, and we're going to do that with a comprehensive evaluation of the math program.
I understand. My son's had algebra at the elementary level, of course, on their level. And kudos to Liberty and Roosevelt for getting 94 percent passing and 100 percent passing in Algebra I. That's good. I guess my question, my next question is directed for you, Mr. Rusk. When I look at the subgroup comparisons of our students, I don't know what's happening, but there's a huge gap between the African-American, the Asian students, and the Caucasian students. In some years, it's 25 percent, some 40 percent, some higher, depending on the grade level. I would like you to, I guess with the math department and the ELA department, take a look at that to see what is happening there and what resources we can put in place to increase those scores. And some are very significant gaps.
Again, you have to be careful. You have to be careful because, you know, when you're talking about very few students versus a lot of students, there's a lot of variables, a lot of factors that go into it. But this is something that we focus on every single year. There's not a year that we're not looking at the subgroup comparison and measuring. But this is, this year versus the park, what we look at is the longitudinal work that needs to be done. How did this student do two years ago, last year, this year, et cetera? That's important work.
Okay. And I note that the gap is larger for Algebra I and Algebra II. I know on the agenda tonight, we're approving after-school help for Hazel and Washington. Maybe it's time to look at after-school algebra help for our students at the high school level. That's all I have. Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Thank you. The, can you, can you address, I'm looking at really the middle school, the math, I don't know what slide it is, but it's the grade, West Orange School District, grade six through eight, math for the seventh grade that it's only 35 percent. Just address what you think's going on as well as in the eighth grade?
I think it would be better, Mr. Schwartzbaum, if we, if we really, you know, gave the group a little bit of time. I think we're all concerned about that number, and this is one that, again, we want to make sure that we dig down, see how it's being taught, when it's being taught, how often it's being taught, go back and look at each standard in each grade level to determine, are we, are we meeting, are the students mastering those standards, et cetera? So there's a lot of work, but we just need, we need a little time. And again, that's the, one of the priorities this year of looking at the K-12 math program, digging in. There's a lot of work we've got to do with that. A lot of work.
So just, I just want to go one step further. On slide 37, when we talk about longitudinal analysis, which would be comparing same students over years, again, we see the same downward trends in math. So again, we really need to look at, we really need to look at. I think it's very, very important that we're seeing the downward trends and what's causing that and what we can do to improve it. In regard to slides 42 through the end, which is really talking about the breakdown by subgroups, can you give, can you, you know, I'm not asking for it now, but if you could provide to us what the absolute numbers are for each one, each one of the, of the individuals? So if I'm looking at page 45, English Language Art for Park in grade six, we had limited, we had zero for limited educational English proficiency. So was that, that no one took it, or is it that they scored zero?
It mean, well, in that particular case, there's only a couple of students involved in that. That's the issue.
Right, right. Because again, I would look at ELA versus math. So on English, I, someone who has limited proficiency in English, I wouldn't expect a very high score. Or however, on some of the math, we see the same correspondence being very, some of the low scores. So that, again, that is, that's a red flag. And we should, it should be addressed. And then I do want to point out, when it came to New Jersey-esque, for, on not many of the scores, we scored way above the state average and, which may be more of an indicative type of test versus park, which it seems that fewer and fewer states are really in the park, taking the park. So.
Mr. Charles?
I just want to point out on the, on the park eighth grade that met or exceeded the expectations. If you look at the three-year trend, it's gone from 16 to 39.
What page, Mr. Charles?
There's no pages here. On the park grade eight, where they meet and exceed the expectation?
Yes.
Okay. Over to 15, 16, and 17, I mean, I see the numbers going up. It's gone from 16 in 15 over to 39, so.
Right.
Someone's doing something right.
Well, we're trending in the right direction. And again, what you have to look at there is that the state and the park numbers are far below, even though we're 39, which we want to be much higher than that, we're still, you're right, we're trending in the right direction, and we're above the state and the park.
I mean, the state's relatively, the state and the park relatively flat over the three-year comparison, but yet ours is more than doubled.
It is. And again, you see that blue line trending up from 16 in 2015 to 39. That's tremendous growth in two years. Tremendous.
That's all I have on that.
Mr. Robertson?
Thank you. Couple of things. One question, is there any parallel, looking by grade or longitudinally by cohort, grade cohort, between the park performance and, I know we haven't reviewed this yet, and it'll be coming down the road, but PSAT, SAT, and ACT performance? And I'm not a park fan, by the way, either, just to be clear. But is there any sort of parallel between how our kids are performing there, understanding they won't hit PSAT until ninth grade, but even looking at ELA and math and Algebra I, Algebra II, geometry scores for high school? Any parallels?
Yeah, the answer is yes. And the, the issue is that we can compare the students who took all of them or some of them. What we can is we have to throw out the students who didn't take the park, who might be in the AP or the PSAT, SAT, et cetera. So we're looking at all that data to see if there's some commonality.
Okay. But, you know, we still have quite a few students that we can compare. I mean, even if 100 students set out, you know, you had close to 400, that, that means that then participated.
Correct.
Okay. You know, did we do any comparison with surrounding school districts? Because I pulled just a couple of scores, and while it's positive that we're trending upward, while it's positive that we're offer, often higher in scores than the state or than the park consortium, we're not consistently doing well against, say, like a Livingston or Milburn. And I also looked at the, when you look at the percentage that's not meeting expectations with a four or five, some of those numbers are staggering, ranging anywhere from 30 percent to, in one case, 77 percent, depending on what year you're looking at. Not to beat it, not to beat this to death, but I think it's clear, it is clear that we have a math problem. And you and I, Mr. Rusk, have talked about this over the past couple of weeks, that in elementary school, there was a time when we were teaching pre-algebra consistently as early as third grade, where pre-algebra concepts were being introduced then. At top public schools, top private schools, it's being introduced by no later than fifth grade. And we have a little bit in fifth grade, but only a couple of weeks out of the whole year. Sixth grade, we have a big divide. Sixth graders and honors get a pre-algebra textbook, and they're focused on pre-algebra from day one. Sixth graders who are, who are in the regular math, while I know that they're supposed to align, I haven't found that to date. And on the syllabus that was reviewed back to school night, pre-algebra was near the end of the syllabus. Now, I know Mr. Melendez and Mr. Fitzgerald are addressing this, but just to make you aware that we, to your point earlier, we need to be introducing pre-algebra and algebra much earlier and making sure also that for our high-performing students, that, you know, many, many more of them should probably be taking Algebra II in eighth grade and not just Algebra I Part B. So we definitely have a math issue. And I wasn't sure if there's some other options we've looked at and addressing. For instance, with our summer math assignments, the summer math assignments or English assignments are only required for honor students, and that's 5 percent to 10 percent of our students. That means 90 to 95 percent of our kids are not being required to do any sort of practice over the summer. And to me, that sends a negative message that, oh, we want to make sure our top kids are well-prepared, but the rest of you, not so much. So there, we need to really look at what are we doing without being burdensome in terms of time, still making sure that over the summer, that there's some mandated practice. It also will allow teachers to better utilize instructional time when the school year begins so they're not spending so much time on review and catch-up and trying to balance between all the different levels in the class, between the kids who did the assignment, the kids who didn't, et cetera. So summer assignments, we should be looking at. Pre-algebra, introducing that much earlier, we should definitely be looking at. And I don't know where we are on this, but we've talked about it a few times. Do we have any plan for providing a summer math program that will allow kids to catch-up, stay up, or even get ahead by providing the opportunity for, you know, from general math, pre-algebra, all the way up through calculus? Because you know that there are a number of kids who also have, kids have various needs from being able to catch-up to being able to stay up. And then there's some who want to get ahead. And right now, some of those kids are going to MKA or Newark Academy to take advanced math courses because we don't make them available here. Do we have any plans on that in the process?
Let me address some of the things you've said. The answer to your last question is yes. Mr. Menes and I have been meeting with the high school group and having conversations about some things coming for this summer, summer of 2018. So yes, the answer is that is in, in discussion in the works. As far as pre-algebra and algebra in elementary, I didn't say it's not being taught. I'm saying that we need to evaluate where it's being taught, how it's being taught, when it's being taught, et cetera, to determine how much of it really is being taught. And as far as, you know, comparing it to other districts, the reason we had to have this, this presentation tonight and not in November is that the state requires you, once you get the scores, to have at the board meeting within 60 days. Districts don't just share their numbers. When they post it, then you can go on there, and you can get a comparison that way. So once the other districts have their presentations and they post it, then we will go in and pull their data off and do a comparison in that respect. So, you know, districts just don't outright share what they do. We just have to take it once they do their presentations. And as far as the summer assignments and, you know, the top kids being prepared and not so much for the others, there's nothing farther than from the truth. This, if you remember, we had this conversation at the board level, and even the board was split on whether we should have summer assignments, whether we shouldn't. The administrative group was split. You know, it's, it's one of those very fine lines. And I can tell you that when we had the parent communication, they were making some very valid points, very important points. So it's something we can certainly revisit, but, you know, it's, this isn't going to be that everybody agrees with summer assignments. There's a lot of people who believe that, you know, let's, let me do it how I want to do it and not make it mandatory. So we definitely plan to revisit that. But, but as far as the top kids, that we're only concerned about them being prepared, that's absolutely not the issue.
I'm, I'm not saying that. Let me put it this way. The reality is that over the past two summers, only the honor students had mandatory assignments, only. So whether or not that was the intent, I'm saying that that's the message it sends. Number one. Number two, we've had the discussion about summer assignments in silos. We've never had a discussion in a couple of years, an open public meeting, where the public can respond, where we have a discussion as a board, and then where we actually vote on the policy or the philosophy as part of a curriculum guide. We haven't done that. Number three, there's overwhelming data, whether or not somebody feels that there should be a summer assignment or doesn't feel it. Our responsibility is student achievement. And there's an overwhelming amount of data that shows that when kids are not engaged for the 10 weeks that they're off over the summer, not engaged at all, that their performance declines and that they then have to take up instructional time in the classroom to play catch-up. So finding a happy medium, I can understand that. I don't, you know, it can be difficult for parents as well as for the kids in following up on the summer assignments. But the data that supports its value is real, it's deep, it's been there for a long time. And, and to, once again, it just is not appropriate to say, honor students, you'll have mandatory ones, non-honor students, not worried about it. That's all. Last question was, you know, we do have, we have, at the elementary level, I'll be very quick, yes?
I believe the term for that is summer slide.
Yes, it is. Absolutely. Thank you.
It's been around for a while.
Absolutely. Last, last point. We do have, we have, West Orange African Heritage Association provides some tutoring at the elementary level. We have some tutoring in partnership, I believe it was, with FDU that occurs. We have some other tutoring volunteers. Have we ever, as a district, or as a district, I'd like us to have a more comprehensive conversation about what type of tutoring support do kids need to be able to bolster their performance in math and in English? And that's something that we have not really had a discussion about. We've accepted help when it was offered to us, but we haven't had a real organized discussion around that. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Rusk, can I just add one thing to what Mr. Robertson is saying? I know when Mr. A. first started and he did the math presentation, he had a summer step-up program for, for math. Is that not continuing? I thought that was still in place.
Yeah, we have a step-up program, yes.
Okay. Mrs. Slapp?
I'll be very brief. I guess my only comments really are regarding the opt-out information. If it's possible, I would be particularly interested in the high school grades. How many of those students who opted out are in the honors and the AP program? When you have 25 percent of your students not taking the test, in my mind, it somewhat invalidates the results. Looking at last year's or 2016, you had 26 ninth graders not take the test. Then they, as they progressed to 10th grade, 83 of them did not take the test. In 2016, you had 74 10th graders not take the test. Then that multiplies to 125. So again, when a significant portion of a grade does not take a test, my concern is how valid are the averages that are presented to us? And that's all I really have to say. I'm not going to reiterate everything my colleague said. And just on your other mentions during your superintendent's report, I absolutely love the idea of the hate has no home signs in our school. I've seen them across the town, and I did some research when you sent this over to us. Other school districts across the country are doing this. I think it sends a phenomenal message, and it's just something that needs to be done, and it's not political. You know, I looked at it, I wanted to make sure it's not to the right, it's not to the left, whatever the heck it is. It's just a true, good-natured message for our students that we will not tolerate that. And then my other point, again, on just something else you were talking about with the Evers report, just as an aside, I do not support this at all, but I just wanted to let people know, in our school board report, we get notifications of what other districts are doing. This coming week, if not next week, Livingston Board of Education is passing a policy for random drug testing at their high school. And I think that is a kind of crazy, bold move for them to do, but again... move for them to do, but, again, I just wanted to bring that to the public's attention. I have had no discussion with my colleagues on this subject, but good luck with that. I'm good.
Thank you, Mrs. Slav. Mr. Ratzke.
Okay, just going to move on. We talked a little bit about the science assessments, again, moving from four to five, staying in eighth grade and movement to all 11th graders. New Jersey CUSAC, at the next board meeting, which will be November 6th, we will have all of the DPR and SOAs for the New Jersey CUSAC, which will be presented to you for your approval moving forward. The last major piece here, I just wanted to talk about the district goals that I sent all of you, and I just want to read them so we can put it on, and everybody can hear it. Number one goal, prioritize, communicate, and implement year-two of the five-year strategic plan in order to incrementally improve student achievement and ensure the efficient operation of the district. This is simply a matter of, the strategic plan is the priority in the district, everything falls underneath strategic plan, and number, and year-two is the year we're currently in. The second one is, the second and third are both follow-ups to our goals last year, our special education department and our school counseling department. The second one is to evaluate the special ed audit, which will be presented at the November 6th meeting, and develop an action plan that addresses the findings and recommendations in order to continue to comply with federal and state guidelines and meet the individual needs of our students. So, again, we would take the audit findings, we would create the action plan, celebrate what we're doing well, and really start to target areas that we need to improve. And then lastly, to prioritize, communicate, and implement a year-two action plan for the school counseling program that enhances and supports college and career readiness. If you remember, last year, we did a full-blown evaluation of the program. There were some people that were not happy that we did it, because they felt that there wasn't a need, and I've said to everybody that every program should be evaluated, and it has nothing to do with anybody in particular except for to evaluate how we're doing. What are we doing well? How can we make things better? So, this is the year-two follow-up with the action plan about how we can continue to improve the school counseling program. So, those are the three district goals, 17, 18.
Thank you, Mr. Ratzke. Does the board have any questions about the district goals?
Sure.
All comments? Mr. Robertson?
Absolutely. Couple of things. Why, while it makes perfect sense, since we've, we're executing a strategic plan to have the strategic plan as a primary focus, goals two and three actually fall under the strategic plan. That's number one. Number two, and goal number three, it's not only a matter of following up with an action plan, that we're supposed to be more researched on in terms of parent and student surveys about how they're being served. Also, New Jersey School Board Association, and actually much of private industry recommends that when stating a goal, that we use what are called SMART goals, and we've had this discussion before. SMART, meaning S is for specific, M is for measurable, A for attainable, R for relevant, and T for time-bound. And rather than simply state a kind of umbrella blanket objective, it would help if we looked at how to be more specific, more measurable in the goal statement. That's number one. Number two, I think that because we know there are specific areas, that it would help us as a district to really move the needle, and I'll say test scores are one of them, PSC, TSC, and ACT, and AP. While we've experienced some improvement in those areas, we still have quite a ways to go. I think that we should be taking a hard look at one of those as a specific, measurable, relevant, attainable, relevant, and time-bound goal, because we know that if we can move the needles on those, we know that our high school offers phenomenal programs from engineering and computer science, to Institute for Math and Science, Institute for Humanities, et cetera, et cetera. But the only thing that's keeping us from having excellent ratings and rankings in the state and nationally are the scores. That's it. We're producing fantastic students, we're getting more students into top colleges, but in lifting up the, you know, 85% of our students in terms of their scores, that's where we could lift our ratings and rankings for the high school, and you can easily get specific, whether it's saying that we're going to do, increase our scores for those exams by 15%, but having a measurable goal. And this would also fall in line, not only with supporting the overall strategic plan objectives, because all of it should be in sync, but it would also fall in line with some of the great efforts that Principal Hayden Moore is doing at the high school now, as he's building a program along with our wonderful assistant superintendent, and putting together mandatory SAT prep, and hopefully that'll move down to middle school and ninth grade with mandatory PSAT prep. So, if we can move the needle on things that are more specific, that's something I'd like to really see among the goals. And beyond that, I think that there's just an opportunity to really drill down and get a lot tighter in terms of our goal statements.
Yep, we're very familiar with SMART goal, and two, the PSAT, SAT, and ACT are a major part of the strategic plan. The high school has data teams that are focused in that area, and Ms. DeMendez is making sure that those areas are an absolute focus of the strategic plan. So, when you're indicating that the other two, the special ed audit and the findings are not part of the strategic plan, it's something that was standalone, because we know the nature and the volume behind the special ed department, it needed to be something that is a follow-up. And clearly, with the presentation coming, the action plan and addressing what needs to be done, as far as the recommendations, that's clearly a priority for the district. But, and again, as far as the school counseling program, I'm not sure, there's been a meeting where you haven't discussed the importance of the program, getting college and career readiness. So, you know, we really could have a lot of goals, we need to make them manageable, and myself and Mr. Mendez and the administrators go very strongly about the follow-up to the special ed audit, knowing that there is a lot of moving pieces to that, as well as the school counseling program. And this is the key year for the school counseling program, being that we did a lot of work last year. Now, we need to make sure that we implement what we need to move forward the counseling program.
I just have to differ with you on a couple of points. While I do believe, and I was a leading, a leading voice in wanting to revamp our counseling program, but under readiness for future success, in the original strategic plan draft, these were parts, these were components of the plan, they were. Also, given that, you know, we had a, over a $5 million increase last year, another goal to consider is a financial one, had an over $5 million increase in our tax levy, I also think we should take a serious look at financial goals. Two years ago, the board approved an initiative to do private funding or fund development pursuant corporations and foundations. Last fall, you formed committees, you engaged New Jersey School Boards in a contract where they will research for us grants, you engaged the grant office, the NJ School Board's partner who, to actually write grants, and we haven't heard anything since. You know, it would, I think it would be a great area to help reduce the tax burden while still growing our programs, if we had actual goals for fund development, and whether it's looking at, hey, we're going to pitch $2 million and have a 12% or 12.5% closing rate, and come in with 250 grand. You know, seeing some concrete goals and having, and looking at how we can reduce tax burden while continuing to grow our programs is something that was also a component of the strategic plan, but it never had a measurable component to it, or a time-bound component to it.
Again, we believe that the, the goals and working with the goals as far as the grants is very important. We have teams that are broken out already, we have the person who's overseeing it, meeting with those individuals, they have submitted things, and we will be reporting back when we have some concrete things to report back, as far as financial goals. But again, myself, Mr. Mendez, and the administrative team believe these are the goals that we need for the district.
I just want to add, while it's not a goal through the New Jersey School Boards, we are, a grant through the New Jersey School Boards, we are approving quite a few grants tonight, on tonight's agenda. So, kudos to Terry Granato and her department for those grants.
The grant system.
But you still have to apply for them.
I understand.
You don't just automatically get them.
We've always applied for the government grants. The goal with doing a fund development effort was to expand to corporations and foundations.
The grants tonight are under Title IV. We generally apply for Title I. The Title IV grants we are approving tonight is actually new to us. It's a new program.
Okay.
Any other board members have any questions or comments about the district goals? Thank you. Mr. Ratzke? HIV report?
I do think what we should do for, in item number one, in the five-year strategic plan, that we should identify what the goals for 2017, 2018 specifically are, so we can then say, all right, here's where we're focusing on pursuant to the strategic plan.
Yeah, and we have that, Mr. Schwartzbaum. We gave you a document tonight, and we're going to email to you as well, that reflects all of the year-two information. So, those goals are located in there.
Because it has all five years' goals, so I'm saying specifically that we can stay focused.
Right.
When you delineate, you have a goal and an objective for the current year.
Yep, we agree. We agree. Okay, provided the HIV report for you.
No, thank you.
And then lastly, just a couple of extracurricular and an athletic update. Tomorrow, we have two events in the district, two bigger events. We have the Scott Kelly book signing that is happening at the high school auditorium, and we also have a very important CPAC meeting at Liberty Middle School. The CPAC meeting begins at 7:00, and as does the signing, the book signing begins at 7:30. Both, again, the book signings at high school auditorium, Scott will be there, and the CPAC meeting is a meeting greet up at Liberty, so we hope that we can get a lot of people out for both of those. This Friday is the homecoming game. I asked Mr. Bly if he'll make sure, he'll communicate with me tomorrow on the times of what you will need to be at the game if you are coming for that homecoming recognition. On October 24th, we have college night at the West Orange High School Turnoff Cafeteria that starts at 6:30. Never too early to go to that. Invitation for all parents who'd like to go to college night. And then lastly, November 2nd, 3rd, and 4th is the high school play, Our Town, starting at 7:00 PM. The senior citizens do the dry run on November 1st. I understand it's going to be outstanding, it's coming along very nicely. On November 9th and 10th, just a reminder that NJEA teacher conferences are happening, which means the schools have closed that two, those two days. As far as an athletic update, our girls tennis program is 11-8 right now with the VRC. Our boys soccer are 8, 2, and 4, ranked 14th in the state and fourth in the county. Our girls soccer is 11-0 and 3, ranked 18th in the state, number one in Essex County, and they've already won the SEC Division Championship. Cross-country was 9-0, first time in school history, they are the American Division Super Essex Conference Champions, and the SEC Conference Champions. Congratulations to Coach Felicia Blake and those very fine student athletes. Football, we are 3-3 after starting 0-2, our last four games, 3-1, kids are starting to play very well together. And volleyball, we are 9-7 and tied for the league championship right now, so we're having a very nice fall season. Again, congratulations to girls soccer and to cross-country. That's all I have.
Mr. Ratzke, do we have Broadway night? Is that this week?
Broadway night?
Mrs. Slav?
Wednesday night, right? Yes.
Okay.
Right. Correct.
Okay.
So, Turnoff Cafeteria, 7:00. Thank you for the reminder.
Okay. Are there any questions on the agenda from the public? If you have a question or comment, please come to the microphone, state your name for the record and your address. There's a three-minute time limit to allow everyone a chance to speak.
Hi, Rachel Gordon, 8 Maker Street. I just wanted to do a few clarifying. The consortium, the Park Consortium, is not 10. I think, you know, optimistically, you're talking 9, but there's probably really only six that are fully implementing it to the degree that New Jersey is. And also, some of the, some, comparing 2015 to 2016 to 2017 is a little misleading, because 2015 was a completely different configuration, and anytime you make a test that's a completely different configuration, you can't compare it. The other thing is that while there may be rumors that Park is here to stay, I also think that there are always going to be parents like myself who are not going to be, you know, on board for it. The other question I had is related to testing. I know that with Park, I personally have never gotten one of those shiny things with what your scores are, but I know that at last spring, we were promised that when we were rolling out the MAP testing, which would be happening, I think, three times, and one has already occurred, that parents would get some sort of thing sent home, and just curious when that was happening. Thank you.
Kristias, 20 More Terrace. Just wanted to start out with a comment regarding the Park presentation. And all presentations, it would probably be helpful, I think, for purposes of public participation, if we could maybe download and read these presentations before the board meetings. There's a tremendous amount of information to review and not a lot of time to formulate questions when seeing these types of things for the first time at a board meeting, so I just think that that's something that would be helpful going forward. There was some discussion regarding comparison of Park scores to other standardized tests, such as the SAT and the ACT. I just want to know if that data is going to be made available for public review, when, and if so, when? And as was just said, it appears that the comparison of the Park presentation was for a three-year period, but that the major changes in the tests have occurred over that time. Given that that's the case, how is what we saw tonight a fair and accurate comparison? And then finally, with regard to MAP testing, since we're talking about standardized testing, what training, if any, has been provided to our teachers with respect to administering the assessment? And how much instructional time is being lost providing that training for the assessment, given that this is a new measure being utilized this year? That's all. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Connie Salambeau, and I am the principal of the Betty Manalena Early Learning Center, and I am not here to speak about Park or anything else. But having seen Kristen Gogarty's name on the agenda this evening as recommended for the permanent position of Director of Special Services, I could not let this moment pass without standing before you and sharing the following thoughts with you. I've known Kristen professionally since 2005. Within that time period, I have seen her excel as a middle school teacher, as a member of the child of the child study team, and the position of learning disabilities teacher consultant, and as a supervisor of special education preschool through grade 5, although she started with preschool through grade 8. Most recently, I've seen her take on the challenge of acting Director of Special Services. It has given me such great pride to watch her grow into the dedicated administrator that she is today. Kristen has shown herself to be the consummate professional in each and every position that she has held. She has a sound knowledge of curriculum, the mechanisms of being a member of the child study team, legal compliance with the rules and regulations which govern special education and related services, and overall administration in special ed. For the past six weeks, I have watched her take on the additional duties as acting Director of Special Services with the same professionalism and dedication. She works with purpose in obtaining the necessary information to make informed decisions. And Kristen has a collaborative attitude with all stakeholders and believes in having meaningful dialogue. As the former Director of Special Services, I can attest to the magnitude of the position and its responsibilities. Kristen Gogarty, with her background in special education, tremendous work ethic, student-centered approach to learning, and diligence in all tasks, is, in my opinion, the most perfect person for this position, and I am grateful for having the opportunity to share my thoughts with you.
Hi, Ken Alper, 45 Colomore Terrace. Just briefly touching on summer assignments. They are mandatory for all honors students, but also for all high school students at every level. So it's not just honors kids who are doing them. Whether or not they should be, I think is actually, I think it would be a good town hall meeting sort of format, because I'd really like to hear a lot more from the community about that. And whether surviving the summer slide is a worthy reason for the board to insert itself into, you know, I think it's great to have them optional, but whether we can mandate that as a district for students over the summer, I'm not sure that that's appropriate or not. I think it's worth a longer, bigger conversation. But I just wanted to correct that it was mandatory now for high school for everyone. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Stuart Nakbar, 11 Morris Road. While I don't have the absolute joyous and effervescent of Connie Salambeano, I was a member of the committee that did the interviews for the permanent position for Director of Special Services. It was unanimous, ladies and gentlemen, unanimous. And it was voted on twice, both a numeric rating of the candidates as well as just a yea or nay. I will not go into the absolute specifics, but I will tell you that Ms. Gogarty was clearly head and shoulders above the other candidate. I do know Ms. Gogarty because I am a special needs advocate. I'm also the parent of a special needs child. I work with this district a lot. I work with surrounding districts. We have one of the best special needs programs in the state. I go up and down this state, left and right, east, west, north and south. I can tell you, this department is phenomenal, and it will be even better under the directorship of Ms. Gogarty. I urge and pray that you will continue and support and have the confirmation done of Ms. Gogarty as our director. Please note, I was also a member of the CPAC Board. I know what goes on. I watch this district from afar and from close. And I can tell you folks that this is the right step. I urge you to please have her confirmed as the Director of Special Services. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Janet Wiggins. I'm an English, special education English language arts teacher at Edison. I just want to thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of Kristen Gogarty. I would like to congratulate her on her quest to become the Director of Student Support Services for West Orange. In my opinion, there is no finer candidate than Kristen Gogarty. I've taught in West Orange, this is my 13th year. I've taught for over 30 years, and I know that Kristen Gogarty has all of the attributes of a person who can handle the position of Director of Student Support Services. When I think about adjectives that come to mind with Kristen, it's, she's intelligent, she's driven, articulate, cooperative, reliable, patient, and kind. I have had the pleasure of working with her for four to five years in the Extended School Program for the summer and the Summer Bridge Program. She, during this time, she has demonstrated the epitome of professionalism combined with the warm professional, the warm personality that has embraced everyone who knows her. To know her is to respect her and appreciate all that she has done for this district and how she has affected my professional goals and how I feel about myself as an educator moving forward. And I'm excited about the prospects of working with Kristen, and I look forward to working with her in this new position. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steven Melendez, and I'm the Assistant Principal at Thomas Edison Central Sixth Middle School. I would also like to offer my support to Ms. Gogarty. I've worked with Ms. Gogarty for many years now. First over at Roosevelt Middle School when she was a teacher, then when she became the learning disabilities consultant, and then the supervisor, and now finally interim supervisor here at the district level. So what I would like to say is that I would trust Ms. Gogarty with my children. And one of the things Mr. Fitzgerald and I always say is, would we put our children in a teacher's class? Would we have a learning disabilities consultant work with our own children? And I could say without a shadow of doubt that I would do that with Ms. Gogarty. She's professional. She works extremely hard. She's knowledgeable. She helped us with the focus school process. She was an integral part of that partnership that we shared with all of the supervisors. So I really, really, really would like to say that please consider her as this candidate because she is the perfect person for this candidate, for this position. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? My name's Carleen Hernandez, and I've worked as a school social worker in the district for the last 14 years. I'm not typically a public speaker, which is probably why you've never seen me here before. But I do feel strongly that I need to express my full support in the appointment of Kristen Gogarty as the new Director of Special Services Department. Over the past 14 years, I've worked with Kristen as a fellow child study team member, as a supervisor, and now as an acting director. In these various positions, Kristen has been a constant source of support and knowledge. She has shown herself to be responsive, knowledgeable, and professional to all questions asked. Even in the past few weeks, my experience as well as my coworkers has been positive with opportunities for relevant and important professional development and quick and knowledgeable responses to all questions asked at all times of the day and night. Kristen comes to this recommended position of Director with a wealth of knowledge about the inner workings of the West Orange public school system, having worked as a special education teacher, a learning consultant, and a supervisor. This experience within the district should not be considered lightly, as it would take years for an outside candidate to gain the knowledge that Kristen already possesses. I have no doubt that Kristen has the skill, determination, knowledge, desire, and will to succeed and excel in making the special services department even better than it already is. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Ellen Giglio, and I'm the Chair of West Orange CPAC. I'm here to support Kristen Gogarty and to say that we look forward to working with her in a very positive way and increasing the positive way in which we've already been working with her in the beginning of the year. I think she's a great candidate for the position, and I can only see us moving forward in very positive ways. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Orange. I'm a teacher, grade 4, at Kelly Elementary School. I am here to speak on behalf and in support of Kristen Gogarty and her appointment as Director of Student Support Services. As someone who's been here 14 years like Kristen, it's encouraging to see someone start from being a paraprofessional and work their way up through the trenches as it may to the directorship position. It encourages me as not just a woman, but as a professional, to stay the course. And loyalty, loyalty is something that is very important to me. And having worked in two prior districts before coming to West Orange, it is nice to see that someone who started here in this district and worked their way up the ladder finally be rewarded with a position that I know that she would be stellar at. I've asked her for assistance on several occasions. She's very knowledgeable, very astute. I love her organization skills. It's something that I aspire to have. And I do not think that she will be anything less than expert in this position. So if you do not hire her, it would be a gross mistake. Thank you for your time.
Hi. I'm Joanne Palera, and I'm the principal at Kelly Elementary School. I had the pleasure of being on the second round committee for the hiring of the director. And I can honestly say that Kristen's responses to the questions, her demeanor, and her professionalism far outweighed anyone else that had been presented to us at the time. I've known Kristen the 14 years that she's been here in the district, and she's always, excuse me, always act ethically, acted ethically and professionally in her personal conduct and in her decision-making. She's a collaborator with parents, teachers, child study team members, and the children as well. She always places the children at the center of her educational decisions. She holds very, very dear the values of equity, community, and rejoices in the diversity of our town, our district, and our schools and our children. She has a social and emotional insight and understanding which brings a lot to the table in the position to which she's going to be appointed. She always ensures that all of our students have equal access to the curriculum and are placed in appropriate programs in the least restrictive environment. She's been instrumental in implementing new curriculum, providing professional development to our staff. She has established wonderful rapport with parents and colleagues. And I have only 56, 55 seconds left. So I really hope you support her candidacy, as I know she has supported our district and will be a loyal employee and advocate for our children for many years to come. Thank you, Marie.
Hi, my name is Lisa O'Kyle. I am a paraprofessional at Kelly Elementary School. My heart is pounding out of my, I can't even believe how nervous I am to talk to you, but I'm doing this because I am so proud of Kristen Gogarty. I had the honor to be in the interviews at the last session, and I was so beyond impressed with the way she walked in with her portfolio, writing questions that had four parts so that she wouldn't forget one part of a question that somebody asked. And I have to say that Mr. Rutske was so wonderful. He started the whole process just by saying, remember how hard it is, they're in the hot seat. This is a very difficult thing for anyone up there with 18 people just asking questions. So I was so aware of that with both of the candidates, and I could not believe when she came in and she sat down and was just so calm and confident and knowledgeable. She knew everything. It was, it was like she didn't skip a beat. She was beyond impressive. And I think that if you know her, you know she is beyond impressive. But one thing that no one has really mentioned just in the simple word is her kindness. And I have done the summer program since Kristen started also, so I knew her through the summer program. And this past summer was the first summer I didn't work because I had surgery. She actually contacted me to find out how I was after my surgery. And it just touched my heart, and I think she does that to many people. I'm not special. I'm just someone that came across the road with Kristen, and I think she's a wonderful person. And please consider her so highly. She is so well-respected and knowledgeable and kind. And that's what this town is all about. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Feldman, school nurse at Kelly Elementary School. I've been in the district for 27 years, and I have six directors and supervisors under my belt, so I can, I'm speaking from a nurse, loyal to West Orange. I've had the opportunity, the fortunate opportunity to work with Kristen for the entire, the past five years I've been at Kelly, and because we had the preschool program there. And every interaction I've had with Kristen has been outstanding. She knows her information. She knows her job. She knows the answers to questions. She listens. She cares about the parents. She cares about the community. She cares about the staff. She, she can connect the dots. She can see outside the box. And she sees every level and every dimension of a situation. There's no black or white. There's shades of gray in everything. And she can see all of that and pull it all together and make the best decision for the child. So I'm here to support her. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dawn Ribier. I'm the supervisor of special services, grade 6 through 12. I have had the honor and privilege of working with Kristen Gogarty for the past six years as fellow supervisor within the department. Kristen is extremely knowledgeable of special education law, of our district, our programs, our staff. I am amazed on a daily basis in regard to the professionalism that she emits with staff, with parents, with all of the stakeholders within our community, within our department. The special education department has so many facets and different staff members, from teachers to child study team members, related service providers, nurses. And Kristen is aware and knowledgeable of the roles of all of the individuals within that department. She, in the short time that she has served as the acting director, I have been astounded with the decisions that she's made. She is aware of the resources that she needs to reach out to in regard to specific decisions. Her, as has been said previously, she, her utmost concern are the students within our district. And in regard to being an effective communicator, she is amazing. Again, in the short time that she has served as the acting director, she has put procedures in place which have already enhanced the department in the short time. She has assisted me in my transition from being supervisor from 9:12 to 7:12 and to 6:12. She has been involved in alternate assessments, professional development, summer programs. So I stand here in tremendous support of Kristen as the next Director of Student Support Services. I have no doubt in my mind that she would fulfill this role to the utmost of her abilities. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marie Mayo, and I'm the President of the West Orange Administrators Association. We are very proud and happy that we are recommending someone from our ranks for the Director of Special Services. She is a wonderful, beautiful young lady. She is intelligent, and she knows what she's doing. She knows how to treat people. She knows how to work with children. She knows how to work with everyone. And I'm not going to belabor this, but I'm going to tell you that she should be our next Director of Special Services. next director of Special Services. Thank you.
Change of subject. Mr. Robertson, in regard to your comments about summer projects. Some of the districts that you like to compare us to have actually gotten rid of summer projects, and they encourage their students to get a summer job so they learn about interpersonal skills, time management, maybe, you know, volunteer work. But I think forcing kids to have, you know, if you have, you know, five classes, five summer projects, is a waste of their time. It's a waste of the teacher's time. It's stressful for the parents. And there are so many other things that kids can be doing that will benefit them in the long term. So I think, you know, stretching the limits on more summer projects and more intense, I think you really need to do some homework on that because, you know, if we want to be a cutting-edge district, we need to prepare our kids for life, not just, you know, their next year's, you know, school classes. I mean, it's just, it's getting to the point with summer projects where it's ridiculous.
Mr. Rutske, there, I guess there are a few comments and questions within those comments.
Yes. I'll take the non-Kristen Gogarty statements first.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon, I, one of the things that I said when I was up at the, where's Ms. Gordon? The most important, the most important piece when we're looking at scores is the longitudinal looking at the same students year after year. We don't disagree with you on the comparison of scores to scores, but there's a requirement from the state that they say to every district, you have to show the following. So we, that's exactly what we were doing. As far as MAP, Ms. Domenas, can you come up to the microphone? There's a couple of questions about MAP that I just want to see if we can address them. If not, we can certainly get back to Mr. Diaz and Ms. Gordon on those. Mr. Diaz, we tried to, is Mr. Diaz here? We tried to provide the PARC presentation, the Evers Report, on the website for people to go ahead and have time to look at it, download it, and be prepared for the board meeting. As far as the comparison, SAT, ACT, those kinds of things, yes, we make those available for people to look at. We would have a presentation at the board meeting and then have it available on the website for those that weren't able to attend the board meeting. As far as major changes over three years, the major change really in PARC came from year one to year two. There wasn't a very big change from year two to three. So that's something that we certainly talked about and discussed. And then as far as the MAP testing for both Ms. Gordon and Mr. Diaz, why don't you start with the training that Mr. Diaz spoke about? How much has been provided? And then there's something that was, said we would send home. Not sure what Ms. Gordon thought. Maybe you can talk to Ms. Gordon afterwards if we can, please.
Sure. We finished our first administration of the MAP assessment. It was administered just as school commenced. On October 9th, we trained our teachers on how to pull all of the MAP reports. We began to analyze the data, look at how students were performing, how to use the learning continuum so we could begin to inform small group instruction. So on October 9th, teachers received a half-day of training for really digging into the data and saying, how do we make this meaningful? How do we use it? We just completed looking at the student profile report today, which says specifically, this is how your student performed. These are the things that your student is ready to develop in the area of math, reading, and language. We have just finished drafting a parent letter, and now it will go before our curriculum committee tomorrow to just review it, make sure that this is how we are communicating with parents, what's the best way, and also how to use the report during parent-teacher conferences. So that it's on its way. We're hoping to get it out quickly. Again, tomorrow will be our final review.
So how much training, just ballpark, do you think you've done with the teachers from the first day they returned to today?
Before teachers left, they were taught how to, they were taught about MAP. There was an overview. I think it was an hour. At the beginning of the year, teachers received training on how to set up a test administration. So how to place students into a test session and how to administer the test. I think that was about an hour and a half. And then this three-hour training on October 9th was, now you've administered the MAP. You just finished, the window closed Friday, I think it was. And so then Monday, right away, because we didn't want to wait on the results. Now how do we pull the actual data so that we could use it to inform our instruction?
And if you could, if you, I don't remember what we said about something being sent home, if it was kind of an overview or, but if you can address that, if, I don't.
So what parents will expect, can expect to receive now is a letter that says, here is a brief overview of MAP. This is how your child performed. Attached, you will find a student profile report. This is how to read it. And this is what the teacher will be using that data for in their instruction, in their daily, every day.
And Ms. Gordon, if that's not what you're looking for, just, we can have Mr. Mendez speak to you after the meeting is done. Thank you, Mr. Mendez.
Mr. Rutske, just one clarification. I thought the PARC presentation was already online prior to tonight's meeting.
It was.
Okay.
That's what I said.
Okay.
I said it was already posted.
I thought you said we tried to post it.
No, it was already posted.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Posted a little late. I found the earlier one from last year and then, and didn't find this one until much, much later.
It was posted this afternoon.
Okay. Well, maybe, I guess.
Well, again, Ms. Dinkman and I were making a couple of final changes to it and doing things this morning. So, you know, we don't want to post something and then have it being accurate. So that's, when we're finished completing it, we post it. For all those that came out that are still here, I obviously completely agree with you with Ms., with Ms. Gogarty. I've put the recommendation on for the board. And so all those things that are said, completely agree. And some of you worked much longer with Ms. Gogarty than I have, but in the short time I have seen her, there are not enough words to express how wonderful she is and how skilled she is. And as far as summer projects, you're right. There's a lot of districts that are changing their tune. So it's something, as I said when I was talking earlier, we have to strike that balance. We have to find that balance. So that's what we'll do as we revisit that piece for this coming summer. Thank you.
Respond on these summer projects. I don't advocate for summer projects. I advocate for summer assignments. I agree, there's so many more wonderful things that kids can do over the summer to enrich their lives. My son had an amazing time in his first lifeguard job ever. My daughter did musical theater and art and all sorts of fun stuff. I'm only talking about the board having a discussion in public so we can hear from parents like you, actually discussing it as a board and then agreeing as a board on a direction. And to Mr. Rutske's point, I advocate for striking a balance. It could be something as simple as read a book. My daughter this summer read Little Women. It could be read a book, you know, do a ma, a small math packet. It doesn't have to be something voluminous or overwhelming or hugely time-consuming that becomes a dominant factor over the summer. Because kids need downtime too. They need playtime. They need explorative time. They need creative time that is unstructured and free. So I definitely don't advocate for these like massive summer projects by any means. But I do advocate for something in English, something in math, that helps to keep them engaged and helps them to be able to go back into the classroom, you know, just a little bit more in tune. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Lab, second reading of board policies.
Thank you. I'm going to move these together. Can I have a motion for policy 3510, 3516, 3542.2, 5141.4?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, I'm so used to saying that.
Is there a second?
I will second.
All righty, here we go. Sorry, Madam President.
Is there a discussion by the board?
Well, why don't I talk about policies first before we ask about discussion?
Okay.
All right, why not? Okay. Policy 3510, operation and maintenance of the plant. There is an added section, as I noted last time, regarding safe drinking water. It is assuring availability of safe drinking water and complying with the quality assurance project plan. Now, any questions from the board on operation and plant update policy?
Yes, I have.
All right.
Okay. Okay. On page two, where the safe drinking water is discussed, and I know it's also cross-reference in the safety policy as well. Mr. Calavano, have we already received a reimbursement for our water lead testing?
No. No one has received it yet, so it was submitted.
Okay. And again, for Mr. Calavano, is there a stipend for whoever the IPM coordinator is? And if so, I don't know if we've discussed any of that, but there's an IPM coordinator outlined on page three of the policy. And who is that IPM coordinator, or is it folded into somebody's job description?
Mr. Siggy.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Just a follow-up on President Mordecai's concern about the reimbursement. The state, in their amazing wisdom, had ordered that testing be provided after a certain date. However, districts like West Orange, which were proactive and actually tested waters before it was mandated, they finally had an epiphany of, oh, maybe we should reimburse them. So that's what this holdup is for right now, the reimbursement of the districts like ourselves who are proactive as soon as we heard what was going on. I forgot what district it was. Patterson? Patterson, yes. So one day we'll get that money back. And also, again, kudos to Assemblyman John McKeon. When we were initially were shopping around for a testing mechanism, at that point, the companies were really hitting the districts very hard because they knew that everybody needed testing. So Assemblyman McKeon went out and found a company that was a lot less expensive than the others. So we took advantage of that, and I think he shared that with the other constituents in the 27th Legislative District, which he represents. Okay, board policy 351.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Lab, one more follow-up. The pesticide application and runoff, I, it's not outlined in this policy, but Mr. Calavano, if you could please find out from Mr. Siggy, I know he was going to start using animal-friendly pesticide and lawn care where possible. Can you please find out if that's still happening? I know we were supposed to take a look at that.
I believe it is, but I'll check.
Okay. Thank you.
Policy 3516 regarding safety, as Ms. Mordecai referenced, it also has language in there regarding the water testing. There is added language now on the updated policy for posting of 48 hours prior to notice of construction when hazardous substances will be used on school property. There is also a new section regarding pipe and water testing that does comply with the Safe Drinking Water Act, and also more language regarding drinking of the water analysis. Any questions from the board on 3516? Okay. Board policy 3542.2. This is a new policy regarding, basically, when parents owe the district monies for school lunches. As I noted last time, and Mr. Calavano had actually provided the information to the board, last year, 1617, we were $28,000 in deficit from students who did not pay for their school lunches. This policy defines a process where, when accounts are in errors, and we're setting a threshold of $20 for deficient accounts and processes. What that means is the school secretary will alert Mr. Calavano. Is that correct? And then notification will go out to the parents. Can you define the process a little bit for the board?
What I believe what's going to occur is when a child hits a certain balance, we'll be notified. My office will be notified. Then we will speak to the individual schools, and then hopefully they can notify the parents. But we also, we're thinking about doing a robo-call so we can send a message out, you know, if even it's daily, that you've exceeded the amount, you know, please send your funds in.
And just to confirm, although there would be a deficit of a balance, the children will still eat. We'll just give them a selected menu. And also, I do know there's been discussion with SEDEXO that our goal is not to embarrass students at all, that the lunch, the workers from SEDEXO really need to follow process and protocol, and it's not an individual responsibility, because sometimes people confuse responsibility with authority. And there really is no individual authority on the part of SEDEXO workers. There is a responsibility. So this process is, will define what those procedures will be.
Do you take credit card payments from parents?
We do, yes. And actually. And also, if I could just add, you know, sometimes the parents need to be proactive. When my children were in school and I did hook up with the PayPal for the lunches, I set a deficit of, if it went under $10, I would be alerted, similar to EZPass. So, you know, friends of mine, like, oh, I didn't realize you had that. It's there. So, I mean, just read what's in front of you, and this way, there's less opportunity for the kids to be embarrassed. So again, burden sometimes has to be on the parents to read. So I'll just leave it at that. Any other questions from the board on that policy? Okay.
At the top of page two, if a student is in arrears and doesn't have money that day to pay for a meal, it says a limited menu will be provided. Will that limited menu be allergy-free, gluten-free, all the various requirements now for kids? Peanut-free?
Yes.
Okay, good.
It will.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Policy 5141.4, update on missing, abused, and neglected children. There is a supplemental policy in, section in this regarding due process with details regarding when allegations are found to be true. So it's clearly just defining the new procedure in place. Any questions from the board?
Another question, but a comment. I know from time to time, I see postings on social media about a child in West Orange who's missing or didn't go home. I'd like this policy to be, well, I know we post our policies, but I think this needs to be emphasized. I think within the last week or two, I saw another such posting. And I messaged a parent to ask if the high school principal was alerted. And that situation was resolved, but obviously, social media's not the place to go and report a student missing. Should be the police or.
Agreed.
Thank you. Roll call? It was motioned and seconded.
Mrs. Lab? Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes. Okay. We have a motion for personnel, letter A, one through, one through eight. Okay. With the addendum, and we are pulling attachment number two.
Which is 3D.
Which is, yes. Which is 3D.
I'll second.
Any discussion by the board?
Yes. On item seven, I wanted to have the addition that this is for a position for the Assistant Transportation Director that, as discussed, that this will be replacing Administrative Assistant, and the department will not have any increase in headcount.
The board minutes will reflect that.
Regarding the appointments tonight of Director Kristen Gogarty. It's like Nancy, I've been here now for six directors, going back to Mr. Scharf, Dr. Elias, Emery Casti, Betty Madalena, and Connie. What I look for honestly in a director is somebody who is personable, responsive, knowledgeable, well-respected by their peers and by the parents, who is innovative and has leadership skills. Clearly tonight, listening to everybody, you're the total package, okay? You know, when I see that we have interview committee members who are parents, staff members, aides, teachers, child study team members, principals, supervisors. child study team members, principals, supervisors, Mr. Knackman, who is here this evening, what he did mention also is he's a special ed attorney. I mean, he does this for a living, so, you know, he kind of walks the walk, talks the talk. He knows exactly what he's talking about. So I will wholeheartedly support the superintendent's recommendation, and I welcome you to ascend to the position, again, after all those people that I named, going back to, and nobody here at the board knows, I understand you might remember Mr. Scharf way back when, and again, this was a long time ago. I'm sorry, Xavier, did you say something? Our program was...
Teenagers, we don't remember that far back.
Well, I'm older, so, actually, I'm older than everybody here. But anyway, I've seen good directors, mediocre directors, crazy directors. So I'm really looking forward to your tenure as the director, and I think it's going to be a perfect fit for the district. You have my full support.
Okay. Any other comments by my colleagues?
Yes. I just wanted to say, it was, to kind of continue and build upon what Mrs. Lab was saying, it was such a joy to hear the outpouring of acknowledgement, of respect, of love, of true appreciation. And Ms. Gogarty, welcome. Congratulations, and, you know, and I have a profound, personally, I have a profound respect for what you do. In my first life, and I may go back to it someday, I was a social worker. And so when I watch how our folks, and we do have the, we do have the absolute best spec ed department, special services department anywhere, and that's, we've become known for that for a reason, because we have great people, absolutely wonderful people. And so, welcome, congrats, and, you know, I know you do very well.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
That's the block, I think you're a great candidate.
I believe everyone said it, and they speak for all of us at the board. Welcome aboard, it was great to see you, all the kind, hear all the kind words and compliments from everyone about you. And I've known you for a number of years as well, so looking forward to your leadership in that department.
Mr. Calavano, roll call?
Mr. Charles?
Two yeses, one normal yes and one absolute yes for Ms. Gogarty.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum? President Mordecai?
Yes, and I am abstaining from letter K, Debbie Sims' substitute, on bottom of page four. But yes for everything else. Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Before, before Mrs. Salamino leaves, I just want to say that the dedication of Betty Madalena Early Learning Center was amazing. I know you're about to leave, so I just wanted to bring that up before you leave. Thank you for all your hard work, you and Dr. Joanne Polara, for all your hard work, putting that program together. And thank you to your new staff over there for all the hard work they did as well putting that together. It's a beautiful building, and it was a wonderful event.
I think, though, for those who were not able to attend, we will be showing the tape. We will be showing the tape, so you could see it then, okay?
Have a good night, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Okay. Continuing with the agenda, may I have a motion, please, for curriculum and instruction, one through 10? One through 10 with the addendum, and I just want to say kudos again to Mrs. Granado for getting the Title I and Title IV grants for Hazel Elementary School and Washington School. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion by the board?
I'd like to thank Dr. Zemenda, sorry, Ebony, thank you very much, and Superintendent Rutzke. We're forming a partnership tonight with FDU, Fairleigh Dickinson University for student teachers, and I just want to thank you for expanding that opportunity to bring those students into our district. Excellent.
Yes, great job, thank you. Any other comments by the board? Okay. Mr. Calavano, roll call?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes. May I have a motion, please, for finance, special services, letter A, one through, oh, boy, one through seven, and business office? One through 11. Thank you. Okay. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Mr. Calavano, if you could just please explain for the public the related service for non-public schools for security and technology and other related services. And I know members of the public always ask if we pay for this, or if it's a pass-through, or how does this work? So if you could please explain that further.
So if you remember, in the summertime, we approved the state aid figures for the non-public schools for textbooks, for security, for nursing services. So what happens is the money just runs to us. So all these items we purchased through, using our purchase order, they give us the information. The items come to us. If it's like for textbook, we stamp property of West Orange Board of Ed, and then we ship the textbooks out to the non-publics. So this does not come from our budget at all, it just comes from the money that's available for the non-publics. And again, if they don't use the funding, we can't use it, it has to be returned to the state.
The items are number six, too, for the headphones, the...
That's correct. Yep.
Mr. Calavano, can you please explain finance number eight?
So we've been working with E-Rate Consultant for years. They're a consultant firm that helps school districts obtain E-Rate funding. E-Rate funding is basically a universal service charge, or a fee that's charged to the telecommunications service providers, and then there's funding available for school districts. So we get money back for our telephone usage, for our internet, for certain pieces of equipment. So if you buy switches, there's certain funding that's available for those pieces of items. So it's great to see that now E-Rate is working with New Jersey School Boards Association. And when you look at their fees compared to the fees in the past, they have, their fees are a lot lower now.
Thank you. Any further questions by the board?
What, the category two funding, what is, how much did we spend on category two funding, and what is it?
Well, this is for the upcoming school year, this is for the upcoming school years.
Right, but how much should we spend in prior years?
I'd have to look at that, but it would include, like, big pieces of equipment, like switches. I can't think of, but I'll give you, I'll send you the list, I'll send the full board the list.
Okay. Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to Michael Kasher for donating guitars to the Edison Middle School Music Department. It's so appreciated, our residents and other folks generally donate generously to West Orange, and it's, it's really a good thing. Thank you. Okay. Roll call, Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles? Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum? President Mordecai?
Yes. May I have a motion, please, for board reports? Thank you. HIV and the miscellaneous as well. You have a second? Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson? Vice President Schwartzbaum? President Mordecai?
Yes. Okay. Now it's time for a report from board members and board president. Go back to that, Mr. Charles?
Just a quick note again about homecoming this Friday at the high school stadium. I think there's going to be pre-game ceremonies, which will be announced in a day or two. Just want to invite everyone to come down to see the wonderful band that we have, the award-winning band. Again, this past weekend, they won another championship for the band, and see a good football game between Montclair and West Orange.
Mr. Charles, do you know if you're supposed to wear a particular color? I know a few weeks ago, we didn't wear pink because we weren't told. So is this a color-restricted football game?
You know, I don't know, but I will find out.
Please, please let us know if we're supposed to wear purple, pink, or Mountaineer blue.
Yes, we were not informed of the pink, so that's why I said to Mr. Bligh today, I need to know tomorrow so I can forward it to all of you.
Yes, we wore Mountaineer blue, we didn't wear pink.
Yes. That's correct.
Yes. Absolutely. Mrs. Lab?
Yes, actually, I do have something to report this evening. I have been working with Assemblyman McKeon's office. I had proposed an update to an existing law, his office helped me, or I helped them draft it. It will be going to the legislation right after the election. In a nutshell, what it is, is doubling the fines for texting while in a school zone. It will also be increasing points on your license. I would like to read a brief statement, which is actually on the bill. The bill increases the penalties for talking on a handheld wireless telephone or sending a text message with a handheld electronic communication device while driving in a school zone. Under current law, the fine for talking on a handheld wireless telephone or sending a text message device on a blah 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 electronic device while driving is $200 to $400 for the first offense. It's currently $400 to $600 for a second offense, and $600 to $800 for a third or subsequent events, offense. The bill increases the fines for talking on a handheld wireless telephone or sending a text message within a school zone to $600 for the first offense, $800 for a second offense, $800 to $1,000 for a third offense, and increasing or adding points to your licenses. I think it's a long time coming. The catalyst for this, when I was at the school one day, actually with Superintendent Rutzke and Freeholde Luciano, and I saw all the kids getting out of their phone, getting in the car, talking on the phone, texting. It was chaotic for me. Our school zones have a greater penalty for selling or using drugs, so why not this? Assemblyman McKeon's office is fully supportive of this, and I look forward to this passing. I'm good.
Thank you, Mrs. Lab. Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Wanted to reiterate that the dedication for the preschool in memory of Betty was really moving, and space is beautiful, and it's really all around, really a wonderful thing.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson?
Yeah, I, too, was so moved by not only the dedication of the preschool, but hearing the little anecdotes about Betty Madalena and her amazing sense of humor, and it's such a beautiful, you know, the school's looking beautiful, and we're just very happy to kick this off in her memory. Couple of quick things I really enjoyed, I went out and caught the tail end of the boys and caught the girls' game on Saturday as both boys and girls soccer trounced Belleville. And the girls are now 11-0 and 3, and they're just, they're totally crushing it. And I'm looking forward to seeing them in a state final soon, hopefully. Also, Mr. Schwartzbaum and I had different points, crossed paths, stopping in at the Fun Fest at the high school, and which was always fun and zany, and that was a good time, as always. Outside of that, you know, interacting, been involved with a Girl Scout troop that started in St. Cloud, but all the girls, my daughter, like my daughter's age, are now older, Troop 20745. So we're doing a lot of fun stuff and looking at the journeys that we're going to be doing coming up. And on a, from a committee standpoint, and I'll get you this in writing, I apologize, but our PR committee did have a meeting. Cynthia Cummings, Perry Bashkov, myself, we're going to circle back with Mr. Rutzke. But what we're talking about, basically, is that we have so much good news, so many great things happening in our district and at our, at our high school in particular, that can help us, that we need to talk about more and promote more, that can help us build relationships with colleges, with foundations, with corporations, and just really lift our brand, you know, from Chinese computer science engineering to the small learning communities, IMS, et cetera. And so we looked at, we're looking at having a section on the homepage of the website, whether it's premier programs, we haven't finalized, but it will highlight some of these programs when you click on it. We're also looking at, we already do a lot of student alumni stories, looking at expanding on that. There's some really wonderful and rare stories, like, you know, the engineering students that we honored here last year, won awards, I think Matt Hassick was one of them, who went out and then they've attained a patent for their fish filter design, and even have corporate contracts and things that are just amazing stories for what high school kids are doing in addition to, or Sarah Wardles, who's at NYU China, and also participating in a Princeton-China program while there because of the great background and foundation that our Chinese program and science programs gave, because it's a joint science and business program in China. But telling those student stories and possibly even doing Skype interviews to bring it to life, and on the media end, as we build this story out, looking at what state and national media we can tap, particularly those who do the high school ratings and rankings to help really build our, our brand in the, in the public eye. And also, with the number of parents that I've spoken with at numerous events over the past month, I want to bring up again something that we've discussed before, but actually see if we can move it ahead. Now that we're past teacher's contract, and we are, we are moving ahead with our strategic plan, this is, it's really an opportunity for us to take this time and to hear more from parents and teachers, and really tap the pulse of how they feel about how things are going, and as well as tapping into their ideas more. And I'd like to propose again, and see if we can get this moved ahead, that we do, we conduct a climate survey that would be confidential, that would allow parents, teachers, be a detailed survey, that would allow parents and teachers to respond on a number of different data points, as well as having some open-ended answers, and, and be able to move that ahead within a couple of months to really give us some more data and some more insights beyond our anecdotal stories. And beyond that, I'm not going to try to move this part tonight, but looking at even doing town hall meetings, similar to what the mayor did, small town hall meetings, and basically conducting what are open public meetings, but in a town hall fashion. What I'd like to move tonight, if I can get a motion for it, is, is for us to develop and execute a climate survey over the next couple of months. Would any board member like to move that?
Okay. Couple of points, Mark. I, I've been asking about town halls since I got on the board, so I'm very, I'm very familiar with that. But what I found out, and as well, climate survey, I know we've done climate surveys since I got on the board. Dr. Kavanaugh did a few climate surveys, and we've done them with each strategic plan that we've done. The issue is, not a lot of people participate, unfortunately. When Kavanaugh did the survey, not a lot participated. When we did the survey, not a lot of people participated. And even when we did the district strategic planning under Kavanaugh, and now under Mr. Rutzke. I think, I don't know if we had 20 parents this last time around.
We had...
And I don't, wait, I don't, let me finish, and I don't remember how many parents we had five years ago, but we had a lot of staff completed, but not a lot of parents. Out of 6,800 kids, you would assume that maybe 10%, we don't get 680 parents to, to participate. And as far as the town halls, I actually have reached out to New Jersey School Boards a few times. We can't have a town hall where all five board members attend. And I know the public has asked for that. If the board members attend, and there's a courtroom, it's a board meeting. So it can only be two board members at a time if we move forward like that. But that is something we have to discuss more as a board, because we are a five-member board, so it would have to be two-two, and then a second person, somebody would have to attend twice for the fifth person to participate. But we do have to have a complete discussion about that.
Let me answer, let me first address your...
And look at it from all angles.
Mrs. Mordecai, let me, Mrs. Mordecai, let me first address your questions. Couple of things, and I do, I do surveys professionally. I've done them in conjunction with Universum, a leading, a leading educational research organization. And when we did the last survey, about 225 or 230 parents responded. When we did the superintendent's survey, we had about equal number to, in the search for Mr. Rutzke, we did, equal number of teachers responded. With the parent survey that we did last time, we did not promote it. First of all, we didn't have a real survey, it was too open-ended. It was too open-ended questions at the website. We didn't promote it in PTA meetings. We didn't promote it in anything, and, and, and any social meet-
Yes, we did.
No, we did not.
That was a district strategic planning.
Not only did we not promote the survey, we promoted the focus groups. Not only did we not promote the survey, I raised that as a major issue when we were looking, when we were doing the debrief on the strategic plan and talking about the positives and negatives. If we promote it and ask parents in PTA meetings, if we do e-blast to parents through WO Zone, if we, uh, uh, or if we are actually engaging parents and engaging teachers through the channels where we normally engage them, they will respond. And I think that we should actu-, try to do a real survey, not too open-ended questions. Can I get anybody on the board to move this opportunity to get, uh, some, uh, real data and real information from parents and teachers at a very, at a very important time as we're moving ahead with the strategic plan?
Okay, a couple of things. During the strategic planning process, we've tell, we told everybody in various media, there are three sessions, and if you can't make any of the sessions, and if all you can do is provide us with responses to the surveys, please do that. There are few parents that attended all three sessions, and I think I see Mr. Alper in the back. I think he's one of the few parents who attended all three sessions of the district strategic planning. And, um, and a lot of parents who attended the sessions didn't do the survey. Um, so I, if we tell them every way, at PTA meetings, on the website, at the Board of Ed meetings, and through WO Zone, and-
We did not last time.
We did.
No, we did.
And we don't have record numbers showing up. You can't lead a horse to water to make him drink.
So is, just, just so I understand, so the issue is, um, that, that, um, historically, we haven't had many people respond, but, so perhaps, perhaps that's what we do, and we, we turn around and say, we need five percent, um, which is three hundred responses. If we don't get it, then, then the data is not, is, well, it may not be skewed. It may not be-
Complete.
It may, may not be complete. By the way, by the way, most, most surveys, um, I'm not a statistician, but I believe, um, you get three percent. You get, you get about a plus, you get about a plus or minus ninety-some odd percentage. Okay, so, so perhaps that, maybe that, that's the way to do it. If, if that's, if historically, we haven't gotten a good response, so then we say, if we don't get this resp-, this number, we don't get a, a good enough number, then we're not, then we're going to, uh, we're not going to use the data for anything, but, uh, and that may be an encouragement, uh, you know, um, you know.
We've mentioned that before.
You know, so I, I would say, I would say, let's, let's just see where we, where we come out from this. Um, it just, we, I know we talk about it. The only, the only place that we ever hear anyone is, uh, is at the board meetings. Maybe, you know, it, you know, maybe we should open it up. I, I, I think that, um-
Mr. Schwartzbaum, would you please move it?
I'm sorry, should open up what?
We should, we should open, in other words, why not take it? If we talk, we've been talking about this, why not? I, I would move, I would second that we-
Okay, and the second point I want to make is that this is an administrative function, so board members wouldn't be doing this.
Um, board members, as part of our, even as part of board goals, we had a community outreach component. Board members, just as we did with the strategic plan, would participate in the development of the survey. Would we actually be out there physically executing? Of course not. But there is an important function for us to play in the development of the survey, and it falls under, uh, it actually falls under, uh, what was originally a board outreach goal. So Mr. Schwartzbaum has moved it. Can we get a second?
Okay. Mr. Ch-, Mr. Charles, you had a comment?
Yeah, I did.
Sure.
I'm supportive of it, but, uh, the feedback getting from the public, but I think we have to work through how we, how the, how we're going to get that vehicle, how we're going to get that information. I think, and surveys is serving one, one issue. Town hall meetings are cer-, certainly another vehicle, but I think the, the information that we get back, or the feedback from the parents and from the public is, is important. But I think we have to work that out.
To try it?
To try, I'm willing to try it.
Okay, are you mov-, are you seconding it?
I'm willing to, I'm willing to, this is what I want to be very clear. I'm willing to, um, sit down and discuss how we can go about getting this done.
Right, but are you willing to second it so we can have that discussion about?
I said yes, I said yes.
I will reserve my judgment and my vote and consideration until we go to the conference next week at school boards, and I'd like to talk to other school board members, and, um, actually, people from New Jersey School Board Association. I, I know Mr. Alper's back here, and he's kind of jumping out of his seat because he actually is a statistician by trade. And I'd like to hear, Mr. Alper, what you have to say about this.
Well, we, we've just moved this and, and seconded it, so that means we actually-
Well, yes, I understand.
We can have a discussion, but you can't bring in the public now.
No, she's not.
No, I'm not, Mark.
Okay.
Um, what I'm saying is, again, I will, I will reserve my vote, my consideration, until I talk to the school boards.
Then you can abstain for the vote, but we, after you have the motion, the second, and the discussion, then you have to vote.
I've got it, trust me.
I have a question.
I believe we all know Robert's route.
Okay.
Mr. Charles?
Uh, yeah, um, you said you spoke to school boards about the, uh, the open public meetings, the town hall?
About the town hall, yeah.
And they're saying that you cannot have that?
Because there will be quorum. If there's three board members or more, because we're five.
Okay, so why couldn't it-
Because it's, it's like a board meeting, if you have three more.
Then why couldn't it be then a board meeting then?
It can't be, actually. That's what I was going to say.
One, one at a time. Mr. Charles?
I guess for clarification, for, uh, why, why couldn't it be then a, a, a regular meeting?
That's the same as having public questions at the end of every meeting.
No, you, you're allowed to change.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm asking the question, I just, I just, for my clarification, so-
If it's like this in a board setting, at the end of the board meeting, that's what we have. Unless you're talking about having a specific topic for discussion, which we've had before as a board, and there's five of us, if there's a specific issue that's happening.
Isn't it true that the board, uh, president determines the board's agenda? And if you decided, uh, uh, that you wish to change the format of the agenda in order to open up an open public discussion, that we have the ability to change the format of a meeting and still have it-
We do that, at the end of every meeting, we have an open public discussion.
Well, that's the current agenda. I'm saying, we have the ability to change the format of the meeting to hold a more open, uh, exchange. We have that ability. We're not restricted by the current format.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand. I was responding to Mr. Charles. Mr. Charles? Yeah, we still need forty-eight hours to notice. Because it's a regular board meeting. That's a regular board meeting.
I'm, I'm saying, given all that, the proper notifications and all, and all that, but, that was my question. Even if you give the proper notifications, why can't you have a town, town hall style meeting? With all of us present?
Mrs. Mordecai, I'd like to ask Mr. Calavano, in his role as board secretary, um, are you familiar with this at all?
Which piece now? Because, because we, because we have a motion on the table for the, um, climate survey.
No, I'm talking about, I'm sorry, the town hall thing.
No, not in my experience.
Okay.
And it's done it, but you don't do it, just-
I wasn't asking that, I was just asking for your experience.
I want to make the similar argument regarding, um, uh, McKeon's motion, your motion, which is, makes a lot of sense. So you can never be the first per-, the first district to do something that, that, you know, doesn't make sense. I, I'm saying, because you're, I believe you're, you're trying to make an analogy, uh, between the fact that other districts haven't done something, so therefore, therefore you don't do it, and hi-, his history. So therefore, what I'm saying is, you, that would be true with any new, uh, initiative. Since no one has ever done it, you, we can never-
I don't want to go that far, to say no one has ever done it. I think Mr. Calavano's saying, in, in his experience-
That's all I was asking.
Okay, okay.
So please, don't put words in my mouth. I wasn't looking for analogy. I was just asking our board secretary if he has any experience doing it. That was my only question, and only intent.
And my response is a very simple thing, just because, it's so one man's experience, so therefore, one can make the, the, one can make the, we're in an educational institution, so in an educational institution, if we then say the only way we will ever do anything is if someone else does it, so then, so that, so, so I'm just saying, just because no one has done it, doesn't mean you, we shouldn't be looking into it, that's all.
We can look into it, I-
That was my point, I asked.
No, we can definitely look into it. I'm not saying that because you, you, we've never done it, we shouldn't. But let's, let's get some more information first. Um, I'd li-, also like to reserve judgment. I'd like to speak with our board attorney, and I would like to consult with the folks at New Jersey School Boards, given the fact that next week we will be at school board convention, with all our resources available to ask all these questions and get the answers in one spot.
The climate survey is actually recommended by school boards to be done once a year.
I understand, I was talking about the town hall at this point.
So I would like to call for a vote?
I was talking, talking about the town hall.
We're separating the town hall meeting.
I've, I've attended town halls before, education town halls, were presented by New Jersey School Boards, or presented by, um, Safe, you know, Save Our Schools, or somewhere like that. And then you have several board pe-, board, board members from various districts who attend, but it's not hosted by specif-, specific district.
Understood.
Um, okay, so there's a motion on the floor, uh, moved by Irv, seconded by Mr. Charles for, uh, climate survey. Mr. Calavano wrote poll vote?
Mr. Charles? Mrs. Lab? Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum? President Mordecai?
Yes. Okay. Okay, um, oh, I haven't given my report. That was Mr. Robertson's report. Okay, just wanted, wanted to add that I also attended, um, a couple of football games, including the one where we didn't wear pink. And I attended, uh, Fan Fest as well. But I have to say that one thing that, that I didn't understand, from last year's Fan Fest to this year, last year I was able to go to various tables for different clubs and purchase items, and that was not available this year. So I think it was on a different format this year. So I was a little disappointed, because I didn't get to buy my new cowbell, because it broke last year. So I was, I guess I'd have to get that at homecoming, maybe. Mr. Charles, may I have a cowbell, please? Um, whatever.
Son, I agree with you, I was missing that.
I will bring one, would you like one blue?
It, it, it doesn't matter what color. I broke, I broke it at one of the last football games, so I was looking forward to replace some of my broken sharing items.
You and Chris Walker, you need more cowbell.
Exa-, e-, e-, exactly, exactly. But I, I have to say, I do like the blankets that the music boosters had on sale the last, uh, football game. That was very warm. On another note, I'm, I'm also a member of the New Jersey School Boards Board of Directors, and also just completed our strategic planning for New Jersey School Boards, and will be presenting the results of those at the next Board of Directors meetings, and also talking about them next week at convention. And I have to say that I'm, I'm happy that we're talking about career and college readiness, because the new president of the New Jersey School Boards Association is going in that direction. There are not many opportunities for high school students to have vocational and career training, or, you know. And I know they're building the new Donald Payne, um, Vocational School downtown Newark, but there are so many kids who, students who would like to take advantage of that opportunity, but there's just not enough seats. Uh, and that's all for my report. The next board meeting will be held on November sixth, and not November twentieth, as the agenda says, because, um, uh, various personnel are not available, and Mr. Rutzke as well. So we've changed that date to November sixth, and at that time, we will be making a presentation of the special ed, um, audit. Sure.
Mr. Rutzke, before we meet next, uh, we're going to have Election Day. Can you just describe the process of what's going on? I know a couple of schools no longer are election sites, and what's happening, okay?
Yeah, we have, uh, security in the buildings. Uh, we are, especially Gregor, we're trying to move the, uh, voting out into the trailer where there's no children, um, so there's some other things that are happening. But the bottom line is, we're having police officers as security, helping with parking detail, uh, security in the building, et cetera. Schools are open.
Thank you.
Mr. Rutzke, how many schools do we still have voting in? I know, um, Councilwoman McCartney has been making a concerted effort to, to work with us to ensure that we remove voting from all our schools. How many schools do we?
Five.
Five, okay. Okay, great. Okay, now it's time for petitions and hearing from the residents. If anyone has a comment, uh, please come forward. There's three minutes on the clock. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Gina Velasquez, twenty-two, Four Wheel Circle. So my question is, um, what was done to, to resolve the issue with the racist student and the student who posted the picture on social media? Um, is anything being discussed at the schools regarding race relations? And also, um, I did hear that there were some things, um, some things in the co-, um, in the auditorium that, where they were speaking with the students about something, I was told, um, to the students regarding the issue. And I just wanted to know what was, you know, what was discussed and by whom? Because, um, I think that it needs to be discussed with professionals who are trained in race relations, not just random teachers. So that's my question, and I think it needs to be addressed.
Hi, Sarah Durrin, forty-seven Oak Ridge. Um, I would love to see a climate survey, that would be great. And I also wanted to ask about the guidance program survey, because I had thought that we were going to be getting a guidance program survey at the beginning of this year, but maybe I misunderstood the timing, um, and I haven't seen it yet. So I was just wondering, um, when we were gonna be seeing that, so I could look out for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ken Alper, forty-five, Collum Hall Terrace. Um, I'm excited to hear about town hall meetings. I've been talking about them for months. I think it's a great idea. I'm sure we'll work out if it can be two board members, or if there's a way to do everyone, or whatever. But I think the important thing is, it's really difficult to do a good back and forth in the confines of a regularly scheduled Board of Ed meeting. And I think that's, for some things, that's important, and we should do those regularly, and, you know. I think overall, it'd be a great thing for the community. Um, I think the climate survey's a good idea. I, just in terms of survey methodology, because it is what I've done for a living for twenty-two-ish years now. Um, it, it's tricky, because it's sort of a self-selection problem. So, you know, if you're doing, if you're doing political work, and you want to know how people are going to vote in a state election, you can, you can really have an almost even chance of contacting everyone in the state, between telephone, whether it's landline, or live operators, the cell phones, or whatever. So as long as everyone has an equal probability of being able to be included in the survey, you can then apply a standard margin of error to it. So a survey of, let's say, five hundred people, we usually have a margin of error of four and a half percent. And what that's saying is, if you were to take, and it's at the ninety-fifth confidence level. So what that's saying is really, if you took the same identical survey, um, if you were, if you were able to do it twenty times, nineteen of those times, the results would be within that four and a half percent margin of error. But that's only if everyone has an equal probability of being included. So you can't really include a margin of sampling error on something like a self-selected survey, where you say, hey, we're taking the survey, we want to know what you think, click this link to come to it. No matter how much you promote it, there's still, you know, even if you go out of your way to include other ways, other than internet for people to participate, it's still not really an equal probability. So you can't really, in a self-selected survey like that, apply a margin of sampling error. That doesn't mean don't do it, it doesn't mean it's a bad idea. I think it's actually a good idea. But you do have to just acknowledge from the beginning that you'll have people on the extremes, you know, people who are really happy about something, or people who are really angry about something, are going to be the most likely to respond. And, you know, if a survey like that says that, you know, seventy percent of respondents were really dissatisfied, you'd have to take that with a grain of salt. On the other hand, if a survey like that says, shows seventy percent of respondents are really concerned about this one particular issue, that, you know, it's, you should view it more as a focus group if you do that, you know, that, that really is something that's really important to the people of the district. But you shouldn't try to extrapolate it to be, uh, meaningful to folks from the entire town or the entire district. So, that's my short survey. I think that's it, thanks.
Cindy Muto Brown, twenty-four, Coral. Happy to see that after all of this discussion, there was, there was a consensus to go ahead and do the survey. I have to agree with Ken. Um, somewhere in the middle, you'll find some grub to work with, right? To make that your focus, so I'm looking forward to that. I think that that's a really progressive way to move forward with the, within the community. Um, my question initially, uh, was about the district and, and what Ms. Mordecai brought up as a concern with the disparity, and I know Superintendent Ruske, uh, stated that there were things that you were actively doing to, um, address those, um, issues with respect to, um, the disparity in equity with subgroups. So, uh, my question is, um, what, what are, what is the district doing to address those disparities? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. I'll just take a couple for Mr. Mr. Rutske. Ms. Velasquez, you changed your hair, I didn't realize that was you sitting in the back. Okay, I don't know anything about an auditorium and discussions by whom. I guess Mr. Rutske will answer that part, but I I just want to say that I I was a West Orange Human Relations Commissioner for several years, and I participated in the Conversations on Race program several times. I was a facilitator, and actually, that's how I got to know those Cummings very well. We were involved in that program together. I was both a participant and a facilitator for the West Orange Conversations on Race, as well as the Montclair Conversations on Race, and it's a very tough subject to discuss, and not many people want to have that discussion. That being said, the incident that happened involved two minor children, and I believe the public should be aware that when minor children are involved, there's very little we can tell you. So everybody might think we're not doing anything, but we're not at liberty to disclose that information as they're minors. That that was my addition. Mr. Rutske, please go ahead.
Okay, so yes, we have put a plan together for the remainder of this year and next year, working with the qualified folks here in this building, Saks, the counselors, administrators, et cetera, and I I believe the piece you're talking about in the auditorium is there was a gentleman who came in and spoke to each grade level and was talking about cyberbullying, and didn't have anything to do with the issue of the two students who made mistakes. It was something that we had planned, that we aligned it to the issue of cyberbullying. Clearly, there has been some issues across all of the middle schools and the high school as far as cyberbullying. So I think that's what you're referring to, Ms. Velasquez, but if it's not, there isn't any other issue. There is no discussion about the situation that happened with the two students. That's not something we do in public as far as using these students as examples. Now, we clearly needed to take away what what happened and determine, is that something that is an ongoing problem? Is that an isolated problem? And which one of those two is, and how are we going to address that? And again, as the as I discussed earlier, the group here at the high school has put a very fine plan together. It's just about done. There's some very phenomenal people who work in race relations and but they they do it in a way that is respectful to high school students and a way that is understood, and, you know, when you're when you're talking to high school kids, as many of you that have high school students, you have to get to their level and make it understandable and a daily piece for them, and when we have speakers, that's what they do. So that's what we're working on right now. I can tell you that the individual who came in was very well received by all four grade levels, because he talked about he talked about his kids and made it very specific to what our high school students across the country are dealing with right now, and it was very, very positive. So that was one of of many steps that are going to happen, but as far as the specifics of the two students, we cannot discuss that, nor will we discuss that, but it was more about understanding what happened, and is that something that is happening often here in the high school? Or is it an isolated incident? And what do we do with that isolated incident if it is, so we can continue to try to stay ahead of it? But we will continue to work with our students and and help. And I I will tell you that when that situation took place, when I came into the high school, there was a group of students who were sitting on the floor in lunchtime, and I just was talking to them with some others, and I think the best piece of advice that I received from probably ten or twelve students was that they were so taken aback by what had happened, simply because the kids said, that doesn't happen here. We we don't treat each other in any way but respectful. Now, kids make mistakes, and there's conflicts in every school, but what they were trying to explain to me is, we've been together for many, many, many years, and we don't have issues like that. You got to realize, though, when you have a diverse population, no matter what school, whether it's Montclair, South Orange Maplewood, Teaneck, et cetera, et cetera, you have to deal with that. That's part of what you have to deal with. There's nothing better than diversity, and with diversity, you have some challenges, and you have to address those challenges. That was a situation that we're going to address, and we're going to make sure that we support all those individuals that need help in any kind of situation like that. Mr. Alper, thank you for the the comments with the survey, and as far as sub subgroups, there's been a lot of work at at all different levels, from specific individual strategies, working with students of different subgroups, to putting programs into place that address the issues from all subgroups. And again, we have to be careful that we're not just looking at a number and one group is different than another group. There's there's a lot of reasons for that, so we have to take one group at a time, we have to take one student at a time, and we have to determine what is it that student needs to be successful in whatever the areas of schooling, and and then we work on it. And I remind people that education is not a sprint, it's a marathon, and our goal is to make sure that every day they continue to progress, and if we don't have something in place to help any student, whatever subgroup they're coming out of, then that's something that it's our job to determine what we can do to to make sure that individual student or that subgroup is continuing to move forward.
I just want to add something. Mr. Alper, thank you for your comments. Recently, when we did the survey for the New Jersey School Board Strategic Plan, I recall that only thirteen percent of board members responded, and sixty percent of New Jersey School Board staff responded. So you're right, it's usually a very small sampling. Mrs. Lab?
Just to follow up, we do have a policy on surveys. All surveys are to be approved by the superintendent. This is a policy that is direct from school boards. I'm not opposed to it. Again, I want it, I abstain because I need more information from school boards about the execution. However, after I attempted to take the senior citizen survey here in town, fifty-five and over, it went on and on and on, and finally, I just said, I'm not doing this. So if we are to eventually do a climate survey, it has to be a reasonable amount of time. I mean, it was insane. I was on there for a half hour, click, click, click. I was like, I'm done, and I can't and I'm not going to call myself a senior citizen, I'm just over fifty-five, but anybody who has that much time, wow. So again, if we do one, that would be, it was ridiculous.
I don't know.
No, I'm talking about the senior citizen survey. It was in.
Rosary's survey was.
I'm going to be a senior citizen by the time I finish their survey. So I'm sorry, Michelle Castellino, but that was insanity.
Rosemary tells me it takes about an hour.
It was insane. So what I'm cautioning is, if we do one, it needs to be a finite, reasonable amount of time that participants will just say, I'm out of here because this is insane. But again, I abstain because I do need more information from school boards, and the policy does read, as all standard policies from school boards regarding surveys, they are to be approved by the superintendent. So let's get some information and go from there next week.
I'm glad you mentioned the senior citizen survey. Mr. Rutske, I believe Mr. I don't know if she's already asked you, but Mrs. Morelli wanted to know if our genius students could help the senior citizens with computer literacy so that they can complete the survey. Many of them are having a hard time with the computer. I don't know if they were able to get a session in today. I know they were scheduled today, or maybe going forward before the thirty-first of October.
Yeah, I can look into see what we have available.
Okay, yeah, yeah. An hour of a survey is pretty tough for anyone.
Question on the guidance survey as part of the guidance process?
Are you familiar with where we are in that process? I'll have to look into, I'm sorry, I'll have to look into the guidance piece, and we'll get back to you.
Yeah, Mrs. Butler was here a few months ago, but you'd have to come, you have to ask her about that.
And just a quick comment, Mrs. Velasquez, I think, and as well as Mrs. Brown, in regard to some a specialist coming in to work, while we do have a rare oasis of diversity and congeniality and and love, we're our students are not immune from the volatile political atmosphere of the rest of the world, and we also don't know what their parents, what their parents' views are and how that may affect them. We've talked with about having a, and I've worked in diversity and multicultural marketing for a long time. We've talked about having a diversity and cross-cultural specialist come in to work with people, not just to talk, you know, speak to them, but to work with groups and group dynamics around discussions and issues regarding diversity and inclusion. And we originally talked about it for staff, but, you know, I hope we are actually looking at a specialist in that and not just inter. Our SAC counselors are amazing, but that's not their area of specialty. That's one. And two, to Mrs. Brown's statement about subgroups, while we are trying to meet the needs of every child, if we're seeing that there is a trend, whether it's with an African-American group or an Hispanic group, or at a particular school or neighborhood, that is an opportunity to develop strategies and approaches to address the specific needs and dynamics of their of their community within our community. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Just have a good night, get home safe.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Aye aye.